Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's great to be with you a couple of days before Thanksgiving. Thank you kindly for joining us. My name is Jerry Miller. The I Love Seaville Show, live from Charlottesville, Central Virginia, the Commonwealth of the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. Today's guest, a true ambassador of Charlottesville, Almarle County and Central Virginia, Juan Diego Wade, kind enough to join us. We will welcome him to the program in T minus 60 seconds. Before we do, we'd like to thank some of the fantastic clients that we work alongside. We are an advertising agency here at V and V Brands and I Love Seaville. And two of our favorite clients, ladies and gentlemen, are Interstate Pests and Service Companies and Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Let's first start with Interstate Pests and Service Companies. Anything that interfaces with the market from a TV, radio, print, social photo or video standpoint originates on the first and second floor of the Macklin Building on Market Street. Interstate started in 1969 in Charlottesville with the first generation, Mr. Robert Wells. He used his personal truck to launch a business, sweat equity and a lot of hard work. Today, it's a four-generation strong family business with almost 100 employees and a Commonwealth-wide working footprint. We salute you Interstate Pests and Service Companies, just like we do the good doctor, Scott Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Dr. Wagner changing people's lives through physical therapy, chiropractic care and sports medicine. Now, you know, we have a rock star on set when comments like this are already flying in and we haven't even welcomed the individual to the show yet. Kenneth Baker, Juan Diego has always been a caring individual who always puts others first. I've known him for 30 years. I am watching from Dallas, Texas. Six different states now watching the program. Judah Wickhauer, please, my friend, go to the studio camera and let's welcome the man, the myth, the legend, Juan Diego Wade to the show. Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna have you kinda pile around with me. I love that introduction, but no, seriously, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
Our pleasure. Thank you for giving us your most precious commodity, your time. We start with the same question for everyone. Who is Juan Diego Wade? What makes you tick passions, hobbies and interests?
Yes. So, my name is Juan Diego Ricardo Wade. So, I'm an African-American with a Hispanic name and I have five brothers and sisters. And I call ourselves the Black Brady Bunch. And I'm Bobby, if you know anything about that.
I love the Brady Bunch.
Yes, yes, I'm Bobby. But I grew up in Richmond, Virginia. And my father was an educator, longtime teacher in Richmond Public Schools. My mother worked for 4H and we had five, my five brothers, sisters and I. We had an open house, a lot of kids from the neighborhood would come over. My mom would feed and take care of. Finished Richmond Public Schools, Georgeworth High School, 1984. Did my undergraduate work at Norfolk State University in urban planning. And I had a professor from University of Virginia to come down to our campus and say to come to apply to University of Virginia for graduate school. They have opportunity to, and I did. And I went to University of Virginia for my masters in urban environmental planning. And I finished there in 1990. Met my lovely wife Claudette Teresa Grant. And we've been married 26 years now. And we have a lovely daughter Gabriella Ruby Lee Wade. And she is a senior this year at Charlottesville High School. And we're in the process now of doing all the applications and for college. And we actually moved here in Charlottesville in 1999. But I've been involved with various aspects here since I started working here and actually in graduate school with my senior project. I did a big study paper for the NAACP on a program that they had. And when I decided to move here, I had me a good foundation of people that I could go to to help ease myself into the community of giving back.
I love it. So, I gotta ask you. I get the impression, and I have not known you that long, in fact, for probably about 20 minutes here. I get the impression that you're a confident, charming individual here. Tell me the love story of how you met your wife and you wooed her in the first date story.
Yeah, yeah. So, at the time, and I'm sure it may be very similar now, that in graduate school, there weren't a lot of students of color in the first year of students of color. In graduate school, we said we wanted to make it easy for the new students, females of color that were coming in. And that's just kinda how we met. You know, we were able to kinda tell them about the university, the community. And that's when, you know, I first met Claudette. And we courted for a few years and we got married in 93. So, it's, I recall just passed by the place here. Our first place we went to on a fancy schmancy dinner was at Fellini's, which is right off the downtown mall. And it took me a month of my pay because I had a little part-time job at Best Products, you know, to pay for it, but it was well worth it. It's been 26 lovely years.
I love it. So, Charlottesville, Virginia. And we'll get into childhood, we'll get into kinda really those passions and hobbies. But Charlottesville, Virginia, in your time here, how have you seen it change?
So, I've definitely seen it change because I did transportation planning for the county for many years. So, I was involved with a lot of planning and development for many years. And one of the big things I've seen is just the growth and development. I think when I first got here in the early 90s, I could literally count on my hands the number of like stoplights, you know, you could like, we could recall them. And now, of course, we can't keep up with them. And just the development, that has changed. Our town has become a lot more diverse since I have, you know, been here during that time. And so, the politics, you know, when I first started, has gotten a lot different, a lot more involved, a lot more attention has been involved. I've only been involved with politics since, you know, last 10, 15 years or so since I've been on the school board. But the number of nonprofits has increased and I believe that their reach and impact has increased as well.
Harrison Scott Wallace. And guys, I'll relay some of the comments from our viewers. We're live on 12 Facebook pages, 13 states now watching. Harrison Scott Wallace says, hello Juan. Christie Morris says Juan is awesome, always willing to help everyone. Mitchell Marquez, Juan is one of the most influential and selfless individuals I've ever come into contact with. He is the first person I've met when I moved to Charlottesville and has impacted my success here tremendously. Thank you for having him on the program. Give it a like and a share, just like Robert Gray, good friend of this show, just like Amara Reid, just like Daryl Bailey have done. So, talk to us about childhood. Where'd you grow up?
So, I grew up in Richmond, Virginia. And I just, I just had, you know, a lovely childhood, you know, with the six of us. My mother really didn't work. She stopped her work. And my father, we were essentially raised on the income of a public school teacher in Richmond. And, you know, like they say, when, if you don't know any better, if you're poor or you don't, you know, you don't know it because you don't know any difference. But we had a lot of love. We had a singing group. My father was a minister as well. We had a singing group and we called ourselves the Chromatic Waiters. And I couldn't, I couldn't sing, but, you know, we would go to churches and things.
You were a singing group but couldn't sing?
Well, myself and my oldest brother, you know, we'd be up there standing and we were singing. My father would go, you know, to us. And next thing I know, I really couldn't hear myself sing. But my sisters and my other brother, you'd like tell them to go up. But that was fine because we would practice every evening and usually on Sundays, we would have to go to somewhere. And so, it was just a wonderful childhood. We would go out and play and stay out all day and just come back in the evening. And I just, I'd have, you know, I just had a wonderful childhood. And that's one of the things I want to try to create to the young people that I work with here in Charlottesville, that we want to try to create for the students that attend Charlottesville Public Schools. You know, with a big family, we always had someone to play with, but all the kids in the neighborhood as well. We grew up in the north side of Richmond, eventually moved to south side. But wherever we went, there was always plenty to do and we would get around on bicycles or just walking. And it just, you know, it just brings smiles to my face every time I think about my childhood. And I think that if you have that, that foundation of love and support and that if you make mistakes, you've got your family there to support you. I think that that's can be the recipe for success for all children, you know, in our community.
How about the importance of education in your family?
It's very important. And of course, my father was an educator and we all was expected to go to college. And all my brothers and sisters, we all went to college. We all have different levels of degrees and things and we all, my parents are no longer with us, but the six of us, we're still together. I moved to Charlottesville, but the rest of my siblings are in the greater Richmond area and they're there, children, I have children. So, the family continues to grow. But education was important. Now, things have changed a little bit different. We were strongly encouraged to go to college with my role now as a career counselor and school board member. College is important if that's for you, but you certainly don't have to go to college to be a success. And I'm reminded of that every time you, you know, I call a plumber or electrician. So, it's a lot of things that you can do, but education is very important and it really increases your opportunity. I was just talking to someone who came to the Career Center just a few days ago and we're talking about, you know, opportunity, employment opportunities. And I said, while you're looking, one of the things that you can do is to work on your GED. And I talked to her about what we have here with TJ As and getting your GEDs. This is a lot of opportunities that you can do, but having that GED, high school diploma is your first step. And for different reasons, some people have not been able to get that. There are opportunities for them to get that and that will increase their employment and earning power down the road.
Alex Erpy is watching right now from Ford Adelante. Sam Spencer says, I'm absolutely proud of the work you have done, sir. Bellamy Brown just shared the stream. Thank you, Bellamy. A lot I want to dig into. Let's start transportation. We have talked about on this program so many times, one of the ways to alleviating the affordable housing crunch, one of the ways to improve environmental conditions, one of the ways to bring safety to the community, one of the ways to encourage and amplify physical health is to emphasize public transportation and de-emphasize the need or the attachment or marriage to vehicles. Public transportation in our community has certainly come a long way. I think it's safe to say a ways it can still go. Open-ended question. Central Virginia, Charlottesville, Almarle County, the public transportation world and ecosystem, how do you look at it?
So, that's an excellent question because I was responsible for the county's planning of bike lanes and transit for many years when I was there and attended a lot of different conferences on this. And public transportation is one of those things that people often say that they will do in their support until it's provided. And then they're like, well, it's so much more convenient for me to get in my vehicle to, because even though we may think transportation is bad here, relatively speaking, it's pretty convenient for people to use their vehicles. Until it gets to that critical point, it's gonna be exceedingly difficult, in my experience, for people to get out their vehicles to use public transit. Not unless you're already kinda in the downtown area and it's just, and it's easy. But if you live, let's say, in the Forest Lakes area or other places, it will take, you know, you wanna, it would be, it would take a concerted effort for you to do this. And this is for some, I've been on the Jont Board for, you know, over 20 years and we are, have many routes out into community, going to Scottsville, going to Crozay and beyond. And so, it is changing, but gas prices are relatively cheap, car maintenance, you know, I think that it was some studies done many years ago that the government, we will take care of a road, you know, from beginning to the end, you know, we maintain it for, you know, gas prices really hasn't gone up since the early 80s, I believe. I mean, the taxes on it. So, we're doing a lot more with, not as much money. So, I think that, that when the economy, when gas prices went up really, really high, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, more and more people got on their used public transit. We didn't build as big cars. And now, things are, you know, right now, relative to speaking, it's about 220, 230. It's, you know, people find that, you know, affordable and it's easier for them to get in their car than to get on the bus.
What does a healthy community from a public transportation standpoint look like?
I think that it would be ideal for someone to be able to walk maybe a block or two to get on, to catch that bus. It will, and once they get there, they don't want to wait no more than 10 to 12, 13 minutes for that bus to get there or whatever that bus may be. But I think that in the future, we're gonna be looking at a lot different. So, you know, it'll be maybe some type of different type of hail and service. I'm not referring to Uber or Lyft. It may be some type of different way that if you're here and you want to get there. Like in Richmond, they have basically express type of lane going up and down Broad Street. Maybe it can be something like that going to major corridors here. And that has been studied and looked at, not only by the NPO, but, you know, many of the UVA planning classes and things of that have done studies and things, looked at that. We just haven't, we don't have the density. And right now, it's just, it's more convenient for people to get in their cars. This, it hasn't, that rub factor hasn't gotten there yet, in my opinion. I've been out of transportation for about 10 years now.
No, I think you're 100% right.
Yeah, so, but, so that's, that's been my recall. My friend Ken Baker, who's from Texas, we've been working on this, you know, that we cut our teeth doing this type of planning, things like this, so.
How do public transportation and affordable housing go hand in hand?
So, I think that they can go hand in, because when you have that density, not only are you able to have that density for that critical mass for people to use it, but I think you're able to, you know, put more units in there that might be, you know, you may not know that it's maybe not market rate because it wouldn't necessarily be a single dwelling unit. There may be an apartment or townhouses and things like that, which we're doing here in Charlottesville. But, but I think that that is a way that it can be done. And, you know, if you increase the density with that, it could be some negotiation and things like that to say that, you know, you can build X amount of affordable units.
I totally agree. So, Betty Had Hall is watching and she says, I'm so proud of this young man. He gives his all to the community. He has helped me many times without being asked. There are only positive things I can say about him. Thank you, Michelle Jackson, for watching the program. Carlton Jones, Russell Stewart, thank you for watching the show. Give it a like and a share. And if you'd like to relay a comment, I'm happy to do it. Charlotte, North Carolina, welcome to the program. Richmond, Virginia, welcome to the program here. So much I want to like dig into with you and unpack. I think we both just are passionate about this community.
Yes, sir.
Charlottesville and Almarle County to you. Talk to me about what it means to you.
So, this community really embraced, my wife and I, when we decided to come here and move here to make it our home. We found a good supporting community. We found a good church to call our home. Oliver Presbyterian Church has really supported me in a lot of my efforts to give back in the community. But this is a place you can call home that when you need to, someone to lean on, to lean on others, that, you know, you have that and that it has made us who we are. We made a conscious decision to stay here. When my wife and I first moved here, we had no intentions of staying in Charlottesville. I think, you know, my, I said this the other night for the war, that our intention, my, as I course were, we're gonna leave this hick town after a few years. But this community embraced us, it loved us and we're proud to call it home now in nearly 30 years. It, it was, it's a wonderful place to raise our daughter and she's about to, you know, leave the house. And so, we love it here. We decided, once we said we're gonna make it our home, we said, we're gonna make, we're gonna, we're gonna make a difference here. We're gonna try to, we're gonna give back. And my wife, she also gives back in the community as well. So, we think it's, it's important. And as a result, our daughter, who's a senior, she volunteers in the community with many different aspects as well. And we feel it's vital that she understood that growing up, that you're part of this community, you're blessed and part of being blessed is that you, that you give back. And it's different ways to give back in the community. We just want, we're just a little bit more hands-on. Other people give back financially or intellectually, different ways to do it. We just a little bit more hands-on.
How about Charlottesville from a schooling standpoint, an education standpoint, four terms?
Yes, I'm in the middle of my fourth term.
On the school board?
Yes.
So, you know this very, very well, certainly more than most. Open-ended question first. In your four terms on the school board, how have you seen it improved and where do we need still to go?
So, I'm, one of the most proudest things that I, that I'm, that I'm proud of is the graduation rate for students of colors. My colleague, my sister, in the Lord Leah Puria, when we ran together in 2005, we wanted to, that was one of the things that we wanted to address. We both were giving back in different avenues in the community and we were approached to run for school board. That was one of the things that we wanted to address. And I think that when we got on the school board, the graduation rate for African-Americans were, was in the 60s. And I think the latest numbers that we have for African-American students, it's 97 and a half percent. And if you just pull those out, there's actually higher than the student population in general. So, it's taken many years to get to that point, a lot of resources to do that. Are we where we want to be? Certainly not. It's certainly, you know, things that we want to still improve in the community. And we're working on that now with the equity. We want more of our students of color in our Quest program, in those advanced classes. And that's something that we're working on. But I've been, and I've said this at many of our meetings, as in my position as a career counselor, someone who looks at numerous job descriptions and things on a daily basis. When you're out there in the working world and I haven't seen one job description to say, what was your GPA? What was your class rank? How many AP classes and Quest program? That is not there. And I understand the rigor, we want to do that. My daughter was able to take advantage of that. But we want to graduate students and get them to really take advantage of all of rich opportunities that we have in the school system. So, that's something that I'm working on, that we're working on as a school system, the equity questions. And we have just implemented, you know, a new focus this year. It's still early in the school year, but I'm very positive of what I'm hearing thus far and what we'll know after, you know, a while.
What are the resources and how have you improved the graduation rates through these resources for students of color?
So, Charlottesville, we're relatively a small district and we have resources to address. We have about 4,300 students in the district. And I know that some high schools, like in Northern Virginia, have that many students in one building and so many secondary schools. So, we're able to find out, when Dr. Atkins came on our superintendent, to really find out where we needed gaps. And we, our district is so small that, you know, five or six students can make a big difference in a cohort and percentages and things. So, we're able to find out what is needed. And so, one of the things that we're doing is that we have, have three and four-year-old program. We have some after-school programs. We're finding out, we're meeting the students where they are to try to address the needs that they, that they need. Many of our students, you know, my daughter, she has a room that she can squirrel down in and do her homework. It's quiet. Some of our students don't have that opportunity. They have, they may be in a house with two or three other families or.
No internet access.
No internet access. And so, we're trying to address those type of things, but it's a lot of things that we have to bury and things that we have to break down before we can, we can educate them, before we can address it. We're trying, we're working to address the internet. We have laptops, you know, for the students to try to level the playing field the best we can.
We talked about this, we talk about this topic often on the show. We've had Lee Elberson, who's the Chief Executive Officer of Clayborne Education. We talked about this with a good friend of ours, Robert Gray, the value of education. How, and you are doing this, you are closing the gap between affluent families and families and their children that perhaps don't have as much economic means. You're closing the gap with families that maybe have two-parent households versus one-parent households. And you've emphasized and you said that there's still ways we have to go. I think what you're doing in Charlottesville should be commended and you are being commended for this. I think Charlottesville in a lot of ways could be a leader in this field. The value of education in totality in every community, how are you seeing communities, different communities respond to this?
So, yes, I do think that we can be the leader. So, we just had our big school board conference in Williamsburg last week and many of my colleagues from around the state, they have heard about our effort. They heard about last year when we were on the front page of the New York Times.
I was gonna ask you about that.
And how we are, and how we responded to that. We could have really closed ranks and said, no, no, this is, you know, this didn't happen, this didn't happen. But no, we took it on because we know that all of, some of our students are not taking advantage of all the opportunities or there is not available to them for some reason. And that's not acceptable. And so, we took that as a challenge and we're sad that that happened. But we, with the leadership of Dr. Atkins, has turned that into an opportunity to say, okay, let's look at, let's relook at how we're assessing like the Quest program and other programs. And so, we use that to request additional funding from city council, which they graciously gave us to hire more, instead of more teachers, Quest teachers. So, instead of taking students out and say, here are some special programs and things for you, we're pushing our teachers in to provide those opportunities and insight to all of our students.
Linda Bowen has very kind words for you. So proud to call this gentleman a friend. He has served the students of Charlottesville well. Please, Juan Diego, run for city council and please have a happy Thanksgiving. A lot of comments we will get to here in a matter of moments. What did you make of the coverage in the New York Times?
So, that it was, you never want to be on the front page, you know, they say.
Of the world's newspaper.
Yeah, yeah. They say all, you know, press is good. I disagree with that. It was not ideal. I'll just leave it at that. But again, we, as a school board, we took that as a challenge. We took it as a challenge and we had many meetings with our superintendent and she's a great leader and she, this is the approach that we're taking to address that. And so, we don't want that experience to happen to any more of our students. And we believe that the steps that we're doing will go a long way to addressing that.
Was the coverage, do you think, justified?
So, I mean, I mean, it's just, I can get into he says, she said type of thing. Did it happen? Yes, it did, you know, to the student. But I think that it's certainly like, for instance, they talked with me, New York Times, for hours. And I don't think I was quoted at all in that because I was just, you know, not that I was being a homer, but I was giving facts, but I just don't think that that was what the angle or approach that they wanted to take. And so, they took the approach that they wanted to take. Again, we use it as a learning and a step to make our system even better, even stronger. And I think now, and that we will see that our district is stronger. And our district now, if you look at other similar type of districts, we're not, you know, on the top, but it's, it could have been, if they wanted to kinda choose the.
Right, they had an angle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying that, you're not saying, they had an angle, right?
Thank you.
I mean, it was very clear to me that they had an angle.
So, and that's one of the things I had mentioned about, you know, politics in Charlottesville, it's, it's, sometimes it's not ideal, but it's, you know, that's what you sign up for.
Absolutely. So, Janice Colton back? Am I saying her? She says, what a wonderful, loving and caring man. He's an awesome role model to everyone in our community. Please give it a like and a share, just like James Watson has done. Welcome Mary Blake, Scott Williams, Freddie Jackson, Janet Knight, Ray Jordan, George Collier. Collier, a lot of folks watching the show right now. If you'd like to relay any perspective to him, just put it in the chat box. Talk to us about why you chose to run for school board. I mean, in a lot of ways, a thankless position, a hard-working position, it's not for compensation.
Yes.
Right?
Right.
The people that are running for school board are the ones that are truly, truly, truly committed to making the community better, which is what you're all about.
Yes. So the story behind me running for the school board is that my fraternity, which is Alpha Phi Alpha, we have a mentoring program in the system. And that part of that program was to take a group of boys from the Walker all the way through high school. And we did. And so they started in the late nineties, and they graduated in 2005. And through that five, six, seven-year process, I saw many things with the system that, man, I said, you know, if I were on the school board, I would change this, I would do this different. I had no aspirations at that time of running, because it was appointed school board, I could have been appointed, or asked to be appointed, but I just had no aspiration. But when opportunity came up, someone just asked me to run, and it had this other lady at the time, I didn't know Leah Perrier, so I decided to run. And so that began my journey on the school board. And just to note, one of those young men that I mentored through that time, and when you're with someone that long, you really get to not only know them, you get to know their family, you get to know their siblings, their ups and downs, their deaths in their family, their marriages. One of these young, one of these young men that graduated, that I was with, he graduated, the military service, he's come back to the community. And just about a week, week and a half ago, he contacted me and said, he's back in the community, he said, I want to create my own mentoring program, like, a drop-in center. I want to give back in the community. And I was at home, having, just finished dinner with the family, and I told my wife, and it just really hit me emotionally, because it's that cycle again of giving back. So it was, it was really powerful.
How does your better half respond to you being a part of so many boards?
That's a good question.
Because my wife likes having me around.
Yes, yes. So every time I would run again for the school board, I would ask the family, when Gabby got older, you know, should I do it another four years? And when I get on different boards and committees and things now, I really look at the time, because I really want to be there with Gabby during those pivotal years of development. A lot of things that I've, that we do in the community, she comes along with us. And now she drives, she can go and do her own thing in the community. But it is a sacrifice, but luckily, that's the whole cordon part. You know, you need, you want to make sure that you get someone that shares your vision and your, and your visions and your aspirations as well. So, and I think that my wife and I, we click perfectly together. And with, just last night, we, it was one of those nights where we both had a night meeting. I was going off to my 100 Black Men meeting, and she was going off to her 100 Black Women meeting. So it was a kind of trade-off. We were getting dinner together for, her mother lives with us, she's ninety-three years old, and so we were getting dinner straight for them. And so we were able to both get back home about seven, seven-thirty last night. So that happens sometime, but usually, you know, one of us is usually there.
I'm so impressed with the efforts and the vision of the 100 Black Men of Central Virginia. Dr. Harrison has come on our show twice. He is an incredible human.
Yes, he is. He's a great role model for me. I've learned a lot from him. We just had, you know, again, a meeting last night. And Daniel Farley is our president now, but I think we all still are learning a lot from Dr. Harrison.
And Charles Lewis has come on the show.
Yes.
Love, love, love Charles Lewis. The impact of the 100 Black Men and Women of Central Virginia in our community over some time, put that in perspective for us.
So I think that 100 Black Men, one of our goals, one of, a motto is, they will be what they see. And so we want the young men to see that they can be different professions in their life. And one of the first things that we did, we just had this big ceremony at one of the high schools where we just, and we still do this now, we just praise young men for getting good grades, three-point-oh or higher. Man, we were hoop and holler for them, just like it's a sporting event. We want to praise them and give them love for that. I think that there's a need, we just talked about it at the meeting last night, that it's not a week that go by that one of us don't get requests from someone to be, to mentor their son, and/or to participate in something. And I'm gonna use this opportunity now, that we need members, you know? We don't have 100 Black Men, and you don't have to be a Black Man. We have, you know, Caucasian members. And so if you have, if we share our vision to give back in the community, to help reduce that opportunity gap, then 100 Black Men and 100 Black Women is the organization for you.
You have a lot of kind words coming in. I'm gonna relay some from the viewers. Trina says, I have known Juan for several years. He has been awesome support for my family and myself, and I will always support him. Krista Bennett, Juan is a Charlottesville treasure.
Yes.
What a wonderful role model for all students of our community. Peggy Van Yerres, congratulate Juan on recently being granted the Charlottesville Regional Chamber of Commerce 2019 Citizenship Award for all the work and leadership he has provided to make Charlottesville a better place for all. I certainly will, Peggy. Rodney, and is it Jigarettes?
Jigarettes, yes.
Okay, great man and a great friend. I've known him for thirty-five years, very caring person, a spirit of caring that is still burning strong today. Very proud of you, keep up the great work. Paul Harris, he's come on this program. I've known Juan for many years, great pillar of our community, and of course, an alpha man. Kyle Tatum, you are amazing. Thank you for everything you have done for me. Casey Engel, she has kind words. Juan, you are the best. Monica Edwards, he mentors my son. He is an amazing man. What does this mean to you?
Well...
And I haven't even read it all.
So I tell, you know, I'm blessed and I'm able to give back, and the Lord has provided me the opportunity to reach and provide help to many people. I've been helped, and as long as I can, I'm going to help others. And, you know, hearing the name, those are some, all good, good people that I've known and I know now. So I'm happy that they are able. My friend Casey Lynn, she's, she actually signed, helped sign me up. She, we taught Sunday School together for years and years, and we still dear friends. Said, you know, Juan, I'm gonna sign you up for Facebook, just like five years ago or so. And so one day, we just sat down in the beginning of the year and signed up for it. So I'm grateful. It's just one, the Lord has really blessed me and allowed me to have impact out in the community, and as long as I can, I will.
You're the Charlottesville Regional Chamber of Commerce. Paul Goodlow McIntyre, citizenship award winner.
Yeah.
When you found out you were winning this award, this is a big-time award.
Yeah, yeah.
What was going through your mind?
Well, you know, over the years, when this award has been given, you know, I look at the names, and these are, you know, pillars of the community. And I mean, I've been kind of, kind of keeping track for the last fifteen, twenty years since I've just kind of been on the radar. And, you know, I never had any aspirations, I just like, you know, I just, I'm not there, you know, and that, you know. And so when I got the notice for the award, I was just really, I just really felt humbled. I think that's the best word, and honored to receive it, because I know the people. One of the main reasons that I felt humbled for it, because for all these different committees and things, and all these people that you mentioned, like Charles and Bernard, they can just as easily receive it. So to be considerate and to receive it, you know, I thought about the model for 100 Black Men, that would be what they see, is could be a role model for some of the young people that I work with. And so I was honored and humbled.
We talk on this program, you know, micro trends and macro trends, and we try to just have a conversation. What I'm seeing, I've been in Charlottesville since 2000. First came to Seaville as a first year at the University of Virginia. You, early on, that Charlottesville was gonna be my home. I've seen Charlottesville change quite a bit in my, you know, nearly twenty years. I'm seeing the tech community explode. I'm seeing entrepreneurship explode. I'm seeing Charlottesville become almost this, like, this playground or this bastion of tech and finance and hedge fund.
Yes.
We're seeing the ice park knocked down now, and we're seeing the Center of Developing Entrepreneurs being built on the Mall as a home for Jeffrey Woodruff's portfolio of businesses.
Yeah.
Open-ended question first.
Yeah.
Charlottesville and the move to being this tech, hedge fund epicenter, what's your take?
So I, for someone who's in the career services field, I think it's awesome. And so a lot of times, when I'm helping individuals find jobs, I find out, you know, what field that they're in. And so Charlottesville is, you know, different studies, top five in the country as far as small startup and things like that. And so it's a lot of, I see there's a lot of opportunities. You, you know, I like for the, you know, you really have to kind of be on the end for some of those jobs, because a lot of those jobs are not on some of the employment sites, but a lot of it is done through...
Word of mouth, who you know.
Yes, yes. And I want to increase that some, because particular communities of colors, they may not have the answer to that. That's one of the places that I feel like I can help fill in, because I do know a lot of people, and I'm happy to make those type of connections. And, but I can't be the Indeed.com for the whole community. But I just see there's more opportunities for the community as a whole to find work. The pay is good, and, you know, you have to sometime deal with some of the, it's not as formal as like working for the county or UVA or whatever, but it is a good working environment. People seem happy there, you know, in these small startups. But the hours tend to be long, but the pay tends to be a lot better.
You mentioned that perspective from, as a career counselor?
Yes.
And someone who assists folks in getting jobs?
Yes.
How do you look at it as a community ambassador? The evolution of these hedge fund and tech jobs and communities taking over the community?
Yeah, so I think that for the community as a whole, I think that, again, it just provides more opportunity. It doesn't, you know, I think, as far as environmentally, it, you know, other than, you know, it's not like a big place is using tons of water and things, but it, the fiber structure, the internet type, it can, it increases, is utilizing that. And it can just take a small building, a small office space, and it can, you know, put fair amount of people in there. And so I think it can be very environmentally friendly, economically friendly. And I think that one of the things that with my community board had on that, I think that they can do more as far as giving back to the community, as far as making donations to nonprofits, or chiming in and things like that. But I understand, if it's a small company, that's not the focus when you first start off with your company, is to get yourself established and then give back. So I understand that.
How do we create the foundation for some of these jobs in our school system? We've highlighted and given props and kudos to Dr. Wes Bellmeese's efforts with We Code Two, building coding infrastructure in the community. If we're heading down this road, and Jeffrey Woodruff allocated 125 million to a data science school at the University of Virginia, which is gonna produce a lot of talent in Charlottesville, how do we make sure that that talent is as diverse as possible?
So I think that one of the things that we need to do, whether, whatever, you know, your skin color may be, is to create world-class students. And those, these students need to be critical thinkers, be able to work in a diverse situation. I like to give the example of myself. I've worked with Abmaw County for nearly thirty years, and only kind of changed jobs twice. I was transportation planning, now I'm a career counselor. But in the future, like my daughter with her job, she probably will work for, you know, and change professions, they say, six or seven times, because the economy is changing so much. So you just have to have those basic fundamental skills and be able to have those soft skills, still be able to shake hands, look people in the eye, and relate to different people, be able to have, to critically think how to address a problem that's confronted to you. And that's what we're doing in Charlottesville City Schools. I think if we can do that, then they will be diverse enough to interact with the new work world. And I just want to share a quick story with you, because I just, it just happened last week when I was at the school board conference. One of our recent, because we're a community with a lot of immigrants with IRC that's here, which is right across the street, we have a young man who finished Charlottesville High School, very active, and who had come from one of the refugee camps in Africa, did very well in high school, very active, went to PBCC for two years, got accepted this fall into William &amp; Murray, doing well.
It's a big-time school.
Active in the community there. I was able to have lunch with him in Atrellis, which is a nice restaurant.
My brother's first job. I grew up in Williamsburg.
Yes, and on, and he was telling me of his experiences and things. I'm just looking at this young man, he was telling me different things he's doing. I'm thinking, maybe ten years ago, he was in a refugee camp, probably, you know, not gonna be able to speak this language and has no aspirations of being in the United States now. Here he is in the United States, at one of the finest institutions, oldest public institution, I think, in the United States, getting education and ready, once he's finished, he's already, he's already got a job lined up in the State Department for internship this summer, just doing fascinating things. He was able to get a scholarship through the Charlottesville Scholarship Program. Those opportunities are there, and we want to be able to make this young man, you know, individuals like that, his story told over and over, but in their own, in their own way. And so I was just, I was so proud when we were in there, having lunch, talking, and different activities and things he's doing around campus, his roommates, around the world. And he's looking forward to going back home to helping other people in the camp that, where he came from. It's just so powerful, that two or three years ago, he was in, just here in Charlottesville High School, and before that, in a refugee camp.
In a lot of ways, someone that is like a barometer, and someone that can help build momentum for your efforts.
Yes, yes, yes.
Throw this to you here. Charlottesville, you said in your, when you were receiving your award?
Yes.
That you and your wife were excited to get out of this big town.
Yeah.
Now, in 2019, Charlottesville still has a way to go, ways to go, but it has improved. We ask this question to everyone that's on the show. August 12th, 2017, what did that mean to you?
So it was, you know, it wasn't a surprise to some, but not to many. It was, it was a, it was a sad day. It was a really sad day to see, you know, having family members from across the country calling, you okay, everything's okay? And just being reluctant to go out for weeks after that, you know, because you didn't know who was still lingering around or whatever. So what I decided to do, I prayed, I prayed a lot about it and talked a lot. I decided to use that opportunity, because I was giving back before then, but to use that opportunity to really actively make a change to invite others in the community that I wanted to, that wanted to give back. Right after the incident, I had a dear friend to contact me. She was in tears, nearly in tears, lifelong resident of Charlottesville, and she was devastated, this could happen to her community. And she just wanted to talk. She just wanted, just, and so we got together and we talked for hours. And our conversation just talked about a lot of things, but it kept revolving back around poverty and race. And we talked hours about this, and one of the things she said she wanted to do was to, how she could give back. And I knew in a lot of different ways that she could give back. And now, when I'm doing something, I will call her up and say, you want, I'm going to Salvation Army Dinner to help, you want to help with Salvation Army Dinner? I'm going to Habitat, do you want to come and help with that? Or going to Friendship Core to help distribute presents or to organize that? So I think that I tried to make that sour lemon into lemonade, real sweet, sweet lemonade.
That's well said.
Thank you.
Charlottesville means so much to both of us. I have a similar story in that this show was birthed as a result of August 12th. And we're just trying to do our small part to feature individuals like you that are amazing. And I think, I think that we have, like we said, a long way to go still. uh, I think that we have, like we said, a long way to go still, um, and, and, and I think that what we need to do is, uh, you know, the first stage is the conversation.
Yeah.
And then what is the next stage for healing?
Yeah, so, so, um, I, I forgot to mention that after, you know, I, I think that we need to have these difficult conversations, there is necessary to understand that, again, what happened wasn't a surprise to everyone.
Uh-huh.
Those conversations are needed, but for me, that conversation has to be moved to action and that is one of the things that, that thrives me to give back, to, to give back is that, you know, I'm, you know, I, it's a lot of, I'm in a lot of committees and meetings and we do a lot of studies, but I'm moved to action and, and, and so I will sit and do things, but I would like to remain active, I, if I can't find myself being active on the board, if I can't fit it in, I just don't get on the board for the, the name to say I'm on so and so board, I want to be active, so I think that, that for each person, giving back, having that dip, making that difference is going to be different for, for different people, they may not be able to physically go and, and do dinner or, or whatever, but they may be able to, to help in some other way, so each person, they just have to figure out what that is and, and that's what, um, that I encourage, I think if everyone do, do their little part, then we'll be able to accomplish an incredible amount.
You have a lot of folks that are asking you to run for city council, I'm sure you hear this all the time.
I've been asked a couple of times.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Is that something?
Oh, so, uh, you know, and this is going to sound like so political, but I never said never, but I'm very happy right now with my, um, term and impact on the, um, school board and, um, this is a wonderful community and I didn't know this was going to turn into, um, a, a politic thing, but, um, it's a wonderful community and the leaders that we have now in city council, that I'm, I'm very confident that they will, that they will lead us in the right direction.
So, uh, my background was a journalist.
Yes, sir.
First job at UVA was with the Daily Progress.
Oh, yes.
Um, I'll throw this to you, did you see, can you, have you, can you remember a race that has gotten as much attention as what we just had on November, November fifth for council, I mean, it was like, like a reality TV show, like celebrities almost, you know?
Yeah, it was definitely a, a lot and that's one of the things that means that, you know, Charlottesville may be small, but it really has some big time implications, big time, um, strategies.
Yeah.
Things that you have to do for, you know, in, for most places where the town of a forty, fifty thousand, it's kind of considered sleepy, um, but not here, not here because the impacts, uh, because of the university, because of the community, because of the history, it's, it seems to be, um, um, really multiplied.
How does the community manage history with moving forward? It's such a dichotomy in a lot of ways.
Yeah, that, that, that's a good question because, you know, I, I grew up in Richmond.
Similar.
Very similar and I think that, you know, my, I went to, you know, Jip Stewart, I went to Mosby, I went, I think two or three or four of my schools in Richmond because I was, we, they were busing us, you know, were named after some type of Civil War history and then at, at the time, it just wasn't, um, you know, it just wasn't on the radar, it just, it, it was what it was and I think even when I first got here, I had untold number of walks and lunches in the, um, um, the, uh, I forgot the name of the new park, um, where it used to be, what I-
Market Street Park.
Yes, and so, um, but times have, have changed and so, um, and I think that, that, um, that, you know, um, that it is where we are with our community and, and that the, the decision makers, they were elected by the, the residents based on, you know, what they say they will do and I think this is that, you know, it is where we are now.
What do you think a healthy Charlottesville looks like?
Well, that's a good question, I think a healthy Charlottesville, it really has to be where, um, I see where every one of its citizens, one of the things we aspire for in the school, that all of its citizens thrive and feel at home and feel like it can have a piece of that, um, apple pie, um, of the, um, that can prosper in the city because a lot of good things is hap- happening here, but everyone can't take advantage of it for, for, um, various reasons.
Um, I've enjoyed this, um, Charlottesville, what would you like to see as a community leader, let's say, you know, you're a goal-oriented person, we both are, three, five and ten years for Charlottesville?
So I think that for, um, in three years, as soon as possible, you know, I like to see, um, everyone have a bed, um, to sleep in, one of the things I do is that I, I, I'm out early in the morning going to the gym or whatever and I see the various homeless people where they sleep, various some of the places are very public, but by the time the public are out, they, they're gone and I, that's just, we can do better than that in Charlottesville, we're potch them, I see we can do better than that, so I like to see that done in, in, in a year, but, you know, for the, your question for three years and, and, um, in, in ten years, I, 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 I would like to see, um, the, that, again, everyone feel like, you know, that they have, um, reached or, or aspiring to, to, to be their best, um, and that's, I know that's something that we can do at any time, but sometimes it takes changes, you know, we're looking to have an impact on the various housing, um, in the community with Piedmont Housing, with, with West Haven and with Crescent Hall and places like that, um, and, um, tho- those are things that I think that, that we in the community, if we put our heads together with the wonderful community leaders that we have here, with the, um, city council, with the nonprofits, I think that we can address, um, these problems.
Uh, final question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is, your daughter's name is Gabby?
Gabriella, yes.
Gabriella, if she, if she chooses to return to Charlottesville to star her family.
Yes.
Then you're going to be a granddad.
Yes.
What is the, uh, how'd you, how do you feel about that?
So-
The next generation.
Yes, so we're happy that Gabriella is, is, has, has turned out to be this really just strong, confident, um, young woman and so I think that when she comes here, if she can maybe find her thrive because she wants to do engineering, her, her, her thing with all these small startups or maybe teach at one of the universities here or start her own business, that she feels like this is a place that she, um, she can do that, there won't be any barriers to her, um, in doing that and so that's, that would be my greatest, um, aspiration.
I love it, I love it, an hour.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure, yes.
It was truly a pleasure. Uh, Lisa Torres, conversation, action, conversation, action, cannot stop talking about it and Juan is an excellent example and leader for this community. Ann Black, this community is so blessed to have Juan among us, he sets the hot, the bar high for all of us, so many comments that I haven't even gotten to, thank you.
Thank you so much.
For joining us. Um, we will archive, a lot of folks just tuning in right now, they want to watch the interview in totality, we'll archive it on iloveseville.com and we'll turn it into a podcast today before the team leaves the, uh, office. We will also syndicate today's show for thirty days across the I Love Seaville Network, which is seventeen Facebook pages, seventeen Twitter accounts, the third largest Instagram account in the community and it an e-newsletter that goes out to roughly a hundred and eighteen thousand inboxes every morning at eleven AM. Uh, we close the program with the same message every afternoon and that's to please embody the golden rule, treat those that are in your life how you want to be treated yourself. Um, I think Charlottesville needs the golden rule, I think the Commonwealth that we know the country needs the golden rule. My name is Jerry Miller, it's the I Love Seaville Show, thank you kindly for joining us this afternoon, take care, be safe, keep it local, enjoy your afternoon.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Yes, it was great, you're right, hour went by really fast, so.
Thank you for coming on the show.
Yes.
One more thing we got to do, we have to take the hero photo.
Oh, yeah.
Here under this light.